All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me just do a quick roll call for our BK City Council candidates. I have Mr. Kevin Hyde, perfect. I have Andrea Willard, perfect. I have Joanne Taylor, yes. Andrew Reber, sorry, how do I pronounce your last name?
Andrew Reber.
Reber, okay, pardon me. Andrew Reber, and then we have Andrew Clark. Oh, welcome, Andrew. I hope you didn't, you know, rush and get here from driving.
Made it, but just barely.
Perfect, perfect, okay. All right then, so my clock says 7:02, we should get going. We have about an hour for our BK City Council forum. So, good evening again, candidates and everyone who's watching this live streaming today. And thank you again, all the candidates, for taking your time today. I know everyone has family and I haven't had my dinner yet, so. So yeah, thank you again for making the time to participate in our forum. For those watching, again, this is the segment for BK City Council election. So we have done one for the Lakeway mayoral, and then we have done another one before this for Lake Travis ISD, all right. These are the five candidates running for the BK City Council for three positions, okay? And they're all present tonight, thank you again. And as a reminder, Election Day is May the 1st and the early election is April the 19th, okay? My name is Tini Vijaya again, and I will be moderating this segment. I'm a resident of BK since 2013. I'm a wife and a mother of 11 years old, a son who is a rising middle schooler, okay? I'm on the board of Lake Travis Progressives, and I also am on the board of four other nonprofits in Lake Travis area in Austin, okay? So besides saving the world every day, I'm also a linguistic specialist for one of the Fortune 500 tech companies here in Austin, okay? With that said, that's my own self-introduction. So I will turn over the camera to all the five candidates, and I will kick off this forum by allowing each one of you to introduce yourself, okay? So one minute introduction, telling us your name, okay? How long have you been here in Texas as well as in this area, BK? And a bit of your personal background, okay? And to kick us off, as you all have received or been watching this forum, we go by the last, the acronyms of your surname, okay? However, I would like to turn this around by starting from the last one. So what do you kick off with Andrea Willard first, okay, despite your introduction?
Thank you for sponsoring this. We really appreciate it. I was born and raised in San Antonio. I graduated from Texas State University. And after that, taught school for five years, three here in Austin, two in Alamo Gordo, New Mexico. I was previously married to a military officer, and we traveled all over the country. When we came back to Texas, I segwayed into corporate training and development for HEB, and really liked it. We moved here in 2015 after we both retired. And lived in Ladera from 2015 to 2019, and in 2019, we moved to Canyon Side and Falconhead West. I served on the Ladera HOA Board, the BK Planning and Zoning Commission for a year. And I am currently serving as Director on the BK Development Corporation, and I was elected to council in 2019. I would love to serve longer, thanks.
Thank you for that, Andrea. Next up is Joanne Taylor.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having this forum. It's always nice to be able to share why we're here and why we're running. So I was born and raised in Texas. I grew up in Wichita Falls, and I moved to Austin when I went to school at the University of Texas. I got my degree in English, and I was an English teacher for 10 years in Austin ISD. And then I moved from the classroom into the central administration, and I worked on human capital management system reforms, looking at strategic compensation, specifically alternative pay structures for teachers. And also then, I went into the service center world, left Austin ISD and went into Region 18 Service Center, and I worked with districts on the teacher incentive allotment and all of the things that go along kind of with putting those structures together to support teachers and help them grow and become stronger in their professions. We moved here to BK in 2009, and we have lived here in the homestead, and we've really enjoyed the way of life and the way things are here. And that's part of why I'm running for council is I really want to maintain that way of life and the whole country feel that we have here in BK.
Thank you, Joanne. Next up, Andrew Reber.
Good evening. Thank you so much for sponsoring the forum. We really appreciate it. It's nice to have everybody finally at a forum, and we can talk. I look forward to tonight and Thursday night. A little bit about myself, Andrew Reber, running for BK City Council. I was born in Indiana, went to Indiana University, had a BA, I have a BA, in history and political science. Started working for the Burden Company where we do municipal and commercial developments on public spaces, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Moved to Texas in 1997 for that job, moved to Cedar Park. We've lived in Cedar Park, Austin, Houston, Lakeway for a few years. And we moved to BK about two and a half years ago. My wife has horses, and we found a great piece of property that so she could have that in her backyard. When I was in Cedar Park, I was on the Charter Review Board. That was a great experience. Also was a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, City Council member as well. Helped the city move from a smaller city into the larger city. So I've learned a lot during that experience. We moved to Houston after I got my MBA at the University of Texas, Austin McCombs School of Business, the executive program. Moved back here and got involved in the Rotary Club, which I'm still a member here in Lake Travis, Lakeway. Civil services and volunteering has always been important to me. I was president of the Rotary Club a few years ago, which is a great experience. When we moved to BK, I'm on the Friends of the BK Parks Foundation Board. But one of the things I like about Rotary is their motto, "Service Above Self." And I've always been, was raised by a great family. My grandmother was the first person to start the United Fund or United Way in our county back in the 1950s when there were no women at all in business. And she caught me a lot about the struggles and tribulations. She did that for 30 years, my mom took over, and then my dad's been on council for 24 years. So it's always been instilled to me to be a part of the community and really give back, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you for that. Next up, Kevin Hyde.
Good evening. It's a pleasure being with you. Let me echo the appreciation for our hosts for sponsoring this forum. My name is Kevin Hyde. I've been a resident of BK for a little more than 12 years, when my wife of nearly 21 years moved our two small girls here, who are now a senior and a sophomore at the Lake Travis High School. I have a BA in politics from Whitman College in Washington and an MBA from SMU in Dallas. My professional background has largely been in institutional money management, working with large institutional clients to solve long-term investment challenges. However, last year, I left the corporate world to focus on being a private investor in my community activities, which is principally City Council. But I'm also the president of my HOA, involved with the Austin Rotary Club and a number of other nonprofits. I've been serving on council for the last year and on planning and zoning for the previous five years. And I hope to be able to continue moving forward. I have a great working relationship on council and hope that we are able to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And our fifth candidate, Andrew Clark.
Thank you very much, and thank you again to the group for hosting. I moved to Texas in the mid-'90s to go to Baylor University. I grew up in Missouri, so I got here as fast as I could. My wife and I moved here to BK in early 2008. We've lived here ever since. I've got three kids, one at each level, campus, high school, middle school, and elementary school. So we certainly enjoy living here. I'm an attorney, and I focus mainly on tax-exempt financing, issuing school bonds, city bonds, county bonds, and real estate. And prior to my time on council, I served on Planning and Zoning Commission for several years. I've served on the Lake Travis Education Foundation and on several other local boards. I was elected in 2019, and I look forward to serving another two-year term.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you again, everyone, for your introduction. So just to recap some of the rules of engagement for tonight. I know all of you have received the emails, so, and you've probably watched the other two forums as well. So we would appreciate if you just keep to that two-minute mark, and if you could point or look at, you know, occasionally look into, look into all the Zoom faces and check out for Amy Susana, who will be flagging the yellow flag for one-minute warning, yeah? And then the red flag, meaning your time is up, okay? And I will try my best to let you finish your answer, of course. But if it's been going too long, I apologize. I have to intercept, okay? All right. With that said, let's start with our question number one, and I will again move back to that order of your surname, okay, your last name, pardon me. And let's start now with you, Andrew Clark. I know we have two Andrew here. Andrew Clark, our first question. When I moved here in 2013, the population was less than 5,000. And as of 2020, it is more than 7,000 people here now, right? So a growth of about 40% in seven years. So we have residuals, commercial buildings have grown exponentially. My question, what is your vision of growth or BK? And how would you manage requests from developers going forward?
Well, that's a great question, and I think it's probably the most important question. And it certainly feels like it has grown more than that number of people in the last seven or eight years, certainly with the surrounding areas that are growing. And one of the pieces of that is that we've got lots of communities that pass through, come to shop. And so one of the things that's been important to me since I got on council was to find ways to develop our, I'll call it, transportation infrastructure. But we've got a very robust plan going forward for trails, including connectivity, connecting all of our parts where people can get from point A to point B, maybe even without even getting in a car, by bike. And then our, it's not a technical term, but sort of ancillary roads that will take some of the pressure off the major intersections. I think anybody that's driven on 71 and passed through Hamilton Pool Road understands what a big deal that is. And so finding developers and encouraging them to do work that is friendly, both in terms of, you know, including things in their project, that trails and that sort of thing, and then other pieces that will allow us to better manage those folks because they're coming from not only growth inside of BK, but growth outside of BK that there's just nothing we can do about. So I think one of the most important things is to better serve those folks as they pass through, come here to shop, so that our folks that do live here are more comfortable and can get around and get to work, get to school in a timely and safe fashion.
Thank you. Next up, Kevin Hyde.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it's, I have similar views to Councilman Clark, and I think that it's a challenge of finding the right balance. All, nearly all of us moved to the BK area for probably similar kinds of reasons, from the look and the feel, the environment that we stepped into, and want to be able to preserve that, both the natural aspects to it as well as just the community aspects to it. That said, we also are in an area that has a lot of desire and a lot of growth, that some of which has, falls under the purview of the city and some of which does not. And we also want to be able to be a business-friendly community because the reason our tax base is so low is because we were able to benefit from having successful businesses. So I think what we need to do is try to find that balance between how do we preserve the look and feel? We do that with by strongly enforcing our zoning regulations, reforming our zoning regulations, as well as trying to work with developers who really take the communities that we serve as a community into full interest. So I think that it's really, it's finding that balance between those things of being business-friendly and positive towards our businesses within our community, we're really managing towards an objective of preserving the quality of what we have.
Thank you. Next, Andrew Reber.
Oh, thanks for the question. So development, working with developers is really one of the main things that the council needs to do. And it's the way that we have the most influence on the way the community is going to look. Once you make decisions now, and this is what I learned in Cedar Park, is as you make decisions, you have to look forward. You can't just make a decision based on what's in front of you today. You have to have a plan and you have to have a direction. And I believe that, you know, following the comprehensive plan, it's probably a good idea to relook at that. It's four years old, but doing things like protecting the Hamilton Pool Road corridor, that's in a comprehensive plan, and I think that needs to be addressed. I believe that we moved here because we like the community. But once you start putting things in, you, you know, once you, once you get rid of space, once, once you get rid of a development, it is what it is. It's very difficult to go back and change that. So it's very important to have people that understand the long-term development. I think things, working with developers on sticking with codes, I think working with small businesses as well as large businesses. It's easy for a large business to be able to manage things a lot better than small businesses, doing things like creative landscaping with native plants to help water. There's all kinds of things that we can do, but the balance is important, and I think we really need to look at the roadway plan as well. I don't think we need to be a pass-through, but I think we need to make really intelligent and well-thought-out and discuss decisions.
Thank you. Next, Joanne Taylor.
I do think it's important for us to look at the comprehensive plan and probably to revisit that because we do need to see what the community is feeling about this. We need to listen to what it is that the community is wanting at this time. And one of the things that we can do as a council is to enforce our zoning and our codes and our, and restrict granting variances. Because once you grant a variance, it sets a precedent, and it makes it difficult to enforce that going forward. So that is something that we can do as a council, is to make sure that we enforce those pieces. As far as the kinds of things that you would want to see from developers, you would want them to start developing things that do fall in line with that Hill Country feel. If we're trying to maintain that, then you have to have less pervious color, impervious cover. You have to have more open spaces, building in those trails and those walkways, and thinking about what that looks like from that perspective. And I think the other piece of that too is you have to think about how that impacts neighborhoods, you know? Having a development going in at the front of our neighborhood and having the 6:30 AM on Saturday wake-up call of the backup of machines is not always the most pleasant. And so I think we have to be mindful with our codes and our ordinances so that neighborhoods don't experience bad side effects from development. So we have to be mindful of how all of those things are impacting us and make sure that we're, we're being judicious in how we approve development.
Thank you for that, Joanne. Next, Andrew Willard.
Well, the good news is BK is almost built out. And two of our big developments, the backyard and Spanish Oaks, are well underway. They will impact neighboring neighbors, but we have a good relationship, I believe, with both of those developers who are trying very hard to be mindful of people in the homestead with their building. And I do think that the backyard will be a huge asset to BK. But again, I lived in Ladera, and I understand how impacted they will be by the backyard. So I had been very interested as they come to us with different iterations, how they will impact everything. The comprehensive plan has been mentioned, is needing probably to be looked at again. It was in 2016 that it came out. We are very aware of the traffic issues on 71 and 620. And we are working with, trying to work with TechStop to get that rectified. We also need to get people off the roads. And one of the things that Councilmember Clark mentioned was that we are trying to get some ancillary roads built to get people off those roadways. But we are almost built out, folks. I think people forget that. And as we expand out Hamilton Pool Road, we have no jurisdiction there. But we can work to try to manage that growth within our jurisdiction.
Thank you. Thank you all. That's a great, great answers for our first question, okay? So let's move on to our second question. And this time, I, it would be Kevin Hyde's turn to answer first. Question number two. On May the 1st, residents will vote on Prop A, and I'll read that out, to reauthorize local sales tax of 1/8 of 1% and use the tax for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. The question, what is your position on this and why?
Sorry about that delay in getting the meat off. I think, you know, as, as a number of people mentioned, that, you know, we are faced with a tremendous challenge in terms of how our roads and ways are managed. And, you know, I think there are, and it's going to cost money to be able to get done. But I think what, you know, we're, this council and hopefully the next council will strive towards is balancing that relationship with TechStop and the other people who influence those roads to be able to manage a more, a longer-term solution. For example, I think that, you know, we've spent a lot of time in council talking about the 620 enhancements that head up towards the Lakeway area. That's a TechStop-controlled area. We know that, that, that really got, a lot of the money got rerouted towards the federal highways and whatnot because of federal matching. But it's our job to continue to, as a council and as a community, to try to continue to lobby for, you know, those kinds of improvements for our area and make sure they stay on radar so that those tax dollars that are, that are being, coming out of our pockets are being utilized in the maximum possible way.
Thank you. Next, Andrew Reber.
Thanks. I believe that what we need to do as we are moving forward with the Prop A is continue the sales tax. It's something that we can use to really work on the roads that we have. As you know, 71 and 620 are state highways. They are completely out of our jurisdiction. We do have the ability to work with them on access roads and points that, putting our roads. I know we're talking about running some roads parallel to 71. You know, one of the things I'd like to talk about on the roads is there's a master park plan for the city park. They're wanting to put four different entrances in there. That's something I think that really needs to be looked at because it concerns me a lot. That's something that would be paid for with these tax dollars. Doing improvements on turn lanes, medians, things like that that help the traffic flow and help mitigate movement of people through the city is very important. You know, we are one of the five lowest taxed cities as far as property taxes in the state of Texas. Definitely want to continue doing that. So I think it's important to keep the sales tax. That's something, we have a very high sales tax base. I think it's a great way to use it, and I look forward to being a part of those discussions.
Thank you. Next, Joanne Taylor.
I agree. I think we should keep the, the sales tax and have it reauthorized. I do think it provides us a great opportunity to maintain our roads. My understanding is that it is for road maintenance, not necessarily for building new roads, that that comes from a different part of the tax for the EDC. So definitely think we want to maintain those roads, and we need to think about what those roads look like. I don't know that building a thoroughfare through our Central Park is the best way for us to move forward with taking things off, taking cars off the highway and putting them through the park. So I think we have to be mindful of our open spaces and make sure that we're not using those as opportunities to alleviate traffic concerns and making those not enjoyable spaces for us to have. If we're really concerned about our roads, we do have a road that's behind Target that looks like it's completely finished, and it just needs to be opened. And I know that that's something the city council could move along if they'd like. And so that's something we could look at is we need to get that road open for Ladera and make sure that, that, that pass-through traffic that's going through their neighborhood can now go down that road instead. So if, I'm very much in favor of maintaining our roads and making sure that they're quality roads and making sure that we provide the right kinds of maintenance as it's needed.
Thank you. Next, Andrew Willard.
I'm definitely for renewing the tax for road maintenance. I think we just spent almost a million dollars maintaining the roads in Falconhead. And so that was, that was money well-spent. The thoroughfare plan is on the books, and the comprehensive plan. Joanne was correct, the EDC probably would be funding those. This tax we're talking about is for road maintenance. The road behind Target has been a very interesting topic for a lot of people. I lived in Ladera. I've watched the road be built. It is not open yet because the developer has not quite completed the checklist to get it open. As soon as he does, it will come before council, and we will hopefully approve it and make it a public road and get those people out of Tardara and through Ladera. So I am in favor of the tax to keep our roads.
Thank you, Andrea. And back to Andrew Clark.
Thank you. Yes, and I too am in favor of reauthorizing the tax. And I think it's important to remember that, that this is not something new, that this has been a program that the city has been using for a number of years. And one of the things that's, that's important also to remember is that as, as the city grows and new neighborhoods are brought online and new developments are brought online, these, the roads are dedicated to the city, and then it becomes the city's obligation to maintain the roads. And again, my predecessors were correct in saying that that money can only be used for maintenance. And so it's important to have those funds available when roads need to be resurfaced, when they need to be fixed. We did a large project in the homestead at the same time that we did the project in Falconhead, Falconhead West, resurfacing those roads. And I am certain that as time goes on, the other neighborhoods will also need that work done. And so this is an important piece of our budget because those, those maintenance funds can come from sales tax instead of having to find some other place to fund those repairs, be it from our limited property tax or the general fund sales tax that are, those dollars are needed for other projects. So I think it's important that, that we continue that for those maintenance purposes.
Thank you. And that's the end of our second question. And I would like now to start the third question. And this time around, Andrew Reber will take the first shot at it. My question, local business is the backbone of our community. We have seen many new ones came up and close to in recent years, even before the pandemic. My question, what do you think is their key concern as business owner in this area? And how would you help them if you're elected?
That's a great question. I think that one of the big concerns is I've been talking to business owners, not just small but large, is the availability of employees. We live in a very affluent area, and a lot of these jobs pay $10, $11, $12 an hour. And they need workers. You can go through businesses in the Galleria, up and down 620, and there's help wanted signs on almost every, every business. That's a big challenge. A lot of them have to pay even more in salary to get these people to come in, which makes them, the, the cost of their products a little bit more. So I think one of the things that we need to do is find creative ways that we can help encourage businesses to get people to come, come up into our area. One idea would be to help create some type of transportation, just private, not public, but private, that would run from the Galleria and connect into the Austin Bus Line at 71. I believe the Sinestra does that for some of their employees, or at least has in the past. That might be an idea. Also, encourage other people in the areas like Spice Wood or Hudson Bend to come out and work on that. I think those are mainly the big issues that I'm hearing from people. Obviously, COVID was a horrible thing, and we're still not out of the woods yet. But I think as the economy's going to boom over the next couple of years, I think finding employees and keeping the employees in our areas is a huge struggle, and we need to address that.
Thank you. Next, Joanne.
And this has been, this has been an ongoing problem, I think, for our small businesses here in BK. I know even before the pandemic, we saw that businesses were closing, especially in the Hill Country Galleria. And one of my favorite places was the Candy Jar, and it closed because the rent just became too high for them to be able to maintain and run their operation. And so definitely want to think about what are ways that we could help assist small businesses in starting up and being able to, to... to maintain those businesses because we don't want to lose our our family businesses. We don't want to lose those local places where we love to go and to see others. And so I think it's very difficult when we think about, you know, what the pandemic has done. It's really kind of, it's made it even more difficult for businesses because people haven't been able to go. So what are some creative ways we can help them? And thinking about continuing some of the options that they have been creative with during the pandemic and those curbside options, those delivery options. And just, I think we're going to have to think about more creative ways. And if we can help the Hill Country Galleria, I know that their owners don't live in the B Cave area, they're from California. Are there ways that we could help support bringing businesses in? You know, instead of just saying, hey, go look in the window and see if you like it. Are there ways we could, we could help like show those spaces and bring businesses in? Because the Hill Country Galleria is a beautiful space, but it's often, we have a lot of empty stores and it would be nice to be able to bring some of those small businesses in.
Thank you, Joanne. Andrea?
Well, Andrew is right, Andrew Reba is right. It's finding employees. This has been an ongoing problem. And as a matter of fact, I saw in the news the other night that the economy is going to boom coming back. And a lot of people are already finding jobs, but it's the service industry and the people who worked in restaurants that are really sort of reluctant to to jump back in. We do need a better transportation system for these people. And I believe just last week, our Economic Development Corporation is working with a private company that will partner with some of the businesses here in B Cave to get transportation for their employees. One of the things I think we need to talk about is paying these people more. I know that, for example, a couple of our big retailers who we get a lot of sales tax from are having to pay fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour. And and I really do think that maybe the public schools, and I know it's out of favor, but when I was growing up, I worked after school and it was the most invaluable experience I ever had. I was a waitress, I worked in a grocery store. I wish the schools could have some kind of program where the kids could get credit for after school work. That would be my big push for the Lake Travis Independent School.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, Clark, Andrew Clark.
Thank you. I think I agree with a number of the things that have been said previously. And I think a cities, most all cities and many of them in Texas have them's biggest tool for driving economic development and helping small businesses is the Economic Development Corporation. And for any of you that have not participated or attended one of those meetings, I think a lot of the ideas that were brought up are already in the works. For example, the the EDB Economic Development Board that is appointed by council and, you know, we approve their projects has had a relationship with the Retail Coach as a as a contractor that uses data and and their sole purpose is to find businesses that might want to locate here, help them locate space, help them learn what what's available, what our economic factors are here. And so those things are already in the works. In addition to a new program, the Small Business or the Business Roundtable, which we're in the process of getting folks that are going to be small businesses that are going to work hand in hand to to come up with ideas and find ways to essentially help each other because the survival of one means the survival of the many if if we're doing the right things. And so I think what's great is that this council, as it's made up today, that's on the forefront of their thinking and what we're working on. And and these things, there's some exciting things on the horizon. And I think hard work's been done, but a lot more hard work. And I think these programs are starting to pay off. And so I look forward to continuing those in addition to the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew Clark. Next, Kevin Height.
Thank you. I just like to build upon what a number of people said. I think that obviously staffing their businesses is the biggest concern we hear, both from existing businesses as well as those who we hear through the Retail Coach would like to come to BK. But be able to find staff that they can that can come out and can either afford to live out here or is willing to make the commute has been a terrible challenge. And we're competing for service workers against Austin and where they just have a higher volume and are more likely to stay. So we have to find ways to get them out here. Public and private transportation ideas are great. I think we absolutely should explore those. One area that hasn't really been touched on that the city can weigh in on is looking at ways to try to find more affordable housing within the the city. I think that we've been really struggling with the fact that this isn't just the businesses, but it's our schools, our police and our fire department. All of these individuals and service workers providing great service to our community are having to commute from from, you know, twenty, thirty, forty miles away just so they can afford to have some place to live. And there are ways that the city can get involved in terms of working with developers on the land, the little land that is still available, to try to find ways that can can help manage that. And right now, we've got police officers who are basically doing double duty, working as managers in apartment complexes so that they can stay here and they want to be here. But there are other things that we can do as a community, that council can do, that can help encourage this kind of development that would allow more people to have good affordable housing, people attracting the people who we want to stay here and be in our community and be able to service our community.
Thank you, Kevin. And that concludes our question number four. And I would like to move on now to question number five. And this time around, Joanne, you'll take the first answer. Question number five, what is your view on diversity, equity and inclusion and its impact for BK community? How would you promote that in your capacity as a member of our city council?
I think inclusion is very important. I I think one of the things that I would love to see happen is for us to have more diversity on our groups, on our volunteer groups, on our boards, on the appointments that we make to the Economic Development Corporation, to the Economic Development Board, to the water PUA system. I would really like to see us to have more people involved. There definitely needs to be more inclusivity rather than the same group of people doing the same things for all the years. And so opening those things up, opening up the lines of communication so that people know that these opportunities are available, sharing that out, providing opportunities for people to apply, having a process for how people can be appointed to boards rather than it just being preferences, making it so that more people have opportunities. I think it's very important for us to hear from all the different aspects of our community and to to know what it is that they're thinking and to have those viewpoints represented on our different committees and and to have them come to council and speak. Oftentimes, it's not, it's not a fun thing to go to council and speak. It's a difficult thing to do and it's even more difficult when when you go, you're talked down to and get condescended to after. And so I really hope that we can have a council that would welcome people to come and speak and to be open and honest about the things that are going on in our city and have all of those different viewpoints represented.
Thank you, Joanne. Next, Andrea.
Could you repeat the question?
Oh, yes, of course. What is your view on diversity, equity and inclusion and its impact for BK community? How would you promote that in your capacity as a member of our city council?
Well, I do think that we are inclusive. I think that this council, the current council, has done a very good job of advertising when there's an opening on a commission or a board, there's an application process. I I'm sorry that Ms. Taylor feels that the council talks down to people. I I have never experienced that while I've been on council. We welcome a lot of everybody to come to council. In fact, I wish more people would come to council meetings. I know that our community is about, the average age is about thirty nine. There are a lot of young families here, they don't have time. And one of the things I've liked about COVID, the only thing I've liked, is that we've been able to have our meetings on Zoom and we've had more participation during COVID than we've ever had, which I really appreciate. So I think we're doing a good job of being inclusive. We could probably do a better job. I know that we are in the process of getting a brand new website and hopefully we can do better outreach through that website. But I I really do encourage everybody to get involved in in government. I welcome it.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, Andrew Clark.
Thank you. I would just say initially that obviously the the city council doesn't isn't involved in the the day to day hiring or management of city staff. We're responsible for our city manager. But one thing that I do appreciate is when I go to council meetings and when we have presentations and when there's, when we're around staff, our staff represents all genders, races, backgrounds. And I think that's, even in a city as small as ours, I think that's vitally important. And I agree that on our boards and our commissions that having a broader community focus is important. I served for a short time on the Economic Development Board, but I think I recently resigned because I thought it was important to have representation from the broader community. And my hope was more of the business community and some other folks that lived here. And so one of the things we talk about often at council meetings, it comes up every time there's an opening is unfortunately, we don't always have as much participation and application as we would like. I know that it goes out on social media and website, email, and it's just a matter of encouraging folks to come participate because we want those folks to participate and we encourage those folks to participate that maybe haven't been involved in things before, be it economic development, planning and zoning, the zoning board of adjustment, our business roundtable, all of those things are important. And so I think anybody that wants to get involved, my door is always open to find a way to get you involved.
Thank you, Andrew. And next, Kevin Height.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that diversity inclusion is critical for BK because we are, I think, hopefully are becoming a more diverse community. We're attracting different communities to the area. And I think we want, I think that just makes our our community stronger and more interesting. So I think that doing what we can to at least support an atmosphere of inclusion, I think is is very important. I think a number of good points have been raised. I share Council Willis' view on Zoom. We're, we're all keen to get back into to in person meetings. But one of the things that really has been wonderful with the the electronic participation is allowing people to dial in and be part of the meeting. Going and spending three hours, you know, sometimes longer at a council meeting is tough for a lot of people, whereas popping open your laptop around the kitchen table and listening while you're making dinner is a great thing and actually keep people engaged and hopefully solicits more involvement. So I think utilizing technology to to expand our reach is important. You know, I think it was also mentioned that, you know, the city is looking to redo its website. They have a very clunky and kind of difficult to move around website. We're actively looking at how we can make that better. But the aim is not is to have that and our social media presence enlarged so that we can actually can communicate more and create more visibility to those opportunities. People like Mayor King have done a great job in terms of trying to use her social media presence to expand what the city is doing. I think we can continue to build on that, both individually and as citizens and as also as a city in terms of creating a framework where people are aware that those things are. So when we have an opening, we've got, you know, not one applicant but six and we have people that really are genuinely interested and we can find roles for them in all sorts of ways. So I I think that being that, you know, our our job is somewhat constrained in terms of what we can do to support diversity, but I think trying to find ways that we are showing an inclusive attitude and framework and trying to find ways to include all members of our community is is critical.
Thank you. Next, Andrew Reba.
Thank you, Tanny. Is this, I'm so glad you asked this question because this is really at the heart of why I'm running. First, let me say that living in Houston, one of the most diverse, if not the most diverse cities in the country, was a wonderful experience and I think it does add to the community. But what council can do, diverse, diversity is not just religion or race, it's also ideas. And we need to have more people with more ideas. We need to reach out to the community and here's how we can do that. First of all, we do not need to have city council members or staff sitting on boards and commissions. All that does is just keep it very provincial. And I think that we need to open those up to other ideas. We need to have more inclusion. A lot of people moving in the community that may be of a different ethnicity, it's intimidating to go in front of council. So one of the things I'll do as a council member is once a quarter, possibly once a month, is I'll have a coffee or a afternoon get together for an hour and have people come out, ask questions. It's not, you know, you walk up to the council and you're up on a dice and somewhat intimidating, but a one on one where we can discuss issues and reach out and talk to people. And I think that's that's very important. And as a Rotary Club, I hear, you know, well, we can't find volunteers, we can't find volunteers. In Rotary, we know how to go out and get volunteers. We go ask people, we talk to people. We don't bury a questionnaire or or, you know, we have an opening six pages deep into a website. We need to utilize our public information officer. That's the person who needs to put these things out, we need to be creative. Let me also talk real quickly about the Zoom calls. I think that's great, but I think we need to expand on that. I think we need to not just have a Zoom call audio, but we need to start broadcasting because people need to see the interaction of council. If you don't have a diversity of opinion on council, you don't have civil discourse and civil discourse is the root of our democracy in our republic. And if if everyone just gets along and says, okay, okay, and shakes their head and votes six oh, there's no discussion and we've got to have discussion. And I'm not talking about a disagreement, a verbal disagreement, I'm just talking about civil discourse and discussion. And to me, that's the most important thing that we need to promote right now.
Thank you for that, Andrew. And we're done with our question number five. So let's move on to question number six. And this time around, Andrea, you'll take the first answer. My question, we understand BK Police Chief Gary Miller will retire and a replacement search will start soon. What would be your criteria for the search and appointment of a new chief?
Well, first of all, we're really going to miss Chief Miller. He's, he's just been outstanding and our police force is amazing because we have a lot of people passing through BK that don't live here. And in fact, his his latest report showed that most of the traffic stops were on Highway seventy one and we're not citizens of BK. So I would like to see, obviously, a police chief that has dealt with the issues that are going on right now in this country that can train his officers to be civil, to be non combative, non confrontational, but yet remain and keep the peace. Obviously, a police chief needs to have a lot of experience. I think we've got some officers on our current BK police force that could probably step into that role. It would be nice, we could have somebody that was very familiar with BK and how we're growing and we've got growing pains. But I I do think it's important that we have a police chief who really understands our unique characteristics.
Thank you, Andrea. Next, Andrew Clark.
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Willis' sentiment on Chief Miller. He's done a wonderful job and he was hired before I got on council, but I sure enjoyed working with him while he was here. And one of the things that I particularly appreciated about him is that he came from, was the longtime police chief in Bernie, which is a community that is somewhat similar to ours in that it's growing like crazy. It's it's outside of a big city, San Antonio, and there's, there's a lot of the same issues. And so he was, he had experienced what that was like and and had experience in the same issues. And so he was, he had experienced what that was like and had experience in helping his officers better police a community that is similar to ours. And so I think certainly if it's somebody from, you know, inside, I would love to have the opportunity to explore that option. But if, if we do go outside of our community, I think it's important that it's somebody that has experience with a community like ours and it's not their first chief job, maybe if it's somebody from the outside. Because I think it's important as we grow and continue to grow that there are a lot of challenges that come with a community such as ours. And so that's, that's important to me. And finally, I think it's vitally important that the chief instill a culture of service. I think one of the things that I was just blown away by were during the latest winter storm, when our officers were out knocking on folks' doors, honking, delivering water, you know, door to door. And they had a smile on their face. They were working 15-hour days driving through the ice. And I talked to at least four or five of them, the smile never left their face. And so I think that is a, that comes from the top down. And so that, that would be most important to what I would be looking for.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, Andrew Reba.
Yeah, I think Chief Miller's done a great job. He's going to have some big shoes to fill as we move forward. Enjoyed meeting a lot of our officers. We have a fantastic police force as it is now. Got to meet some of them as we were delivering meals to first responders to very beginning of COVID. You know, there are so many things that have happened in this country in the last 12 to 18 months that have brought forefront, good and bad, about policing. And I think what we've learned a lot is that community involvement, communication, like any, any relationship, communication is key. And what benefit we have right now, which I think is a really unique opportunity, is this has been going on now for a year, year and a half. So the candidates that we can talk to, we can see their track record and see how they've worked with other districts, with other officers, and how they're able to work with their force, work with the community and make sure that we have a police force that does their job, keeps us safe. That's really what they would do. But they also have the respect of the people that they work with because that, that is so important. I think a lot of the cities and, you know, most of them are a lot larger than us that have had the problems, it comes down to communication. You know, there's a group of people that feel intimidated by, by the police and there are people that, you know, that don't talk. And I think that that's important. And I think Chief Miller's done a fantastic job of that. We need to find someone who's going to continue that and really work with the community. They communicate very well. Every week I get a Facebook post about all of the stops and what happened and occurred. And he, the chief is usually at most of the council meetings, which I think is great. But I think those are the things that we'll look for as an officer or for a police chief, and I look forward to being part of that.
Thank you, Andrew. And my sincere apology, Kevin, I should have not missed you and jumped to Andrew. Again, apology. Kevin, you're up next.
No worries. Yeah, I think there's been some great points. I think Chief Miller has built a great legacy that he should be proud of. I think that for our size, we have a quite a well-diverse police force and hopefully we'll continue to build upon that. And whoever comes in and fills that seat has some big shoes to fill. But one of the things is continuing to make sure that we do have, going back to one of your earlier questions, a diverse and inclusive department. I also shared, you know, Andrew's view that really creating that, that service-oriented situation during the storm. Not only were they, you know, here for 15 hours plus, but many of them were staying over and sleeping in the city with friends' house and on bunks and beds so they could be here first thing when their shift started. So I think these are enormously dedicated individuals and creating, establishing a chief that can continue to support those aspects is critical. The one characteristic that I didn't hear from some of the other candidates that I think is, is fundamental to this particular job is, you know, we're relatively small community, but we get a lot of pass-through traffic as it has been identified. So one of the things that our chief and his staff, he spends a lot of time doing, is working with our surrounding communities in terms of partnering, both with sharing information so that when situations do come up, they're working as a cohesive team. And not just as BK by itself and Lake Way or Lake Travis Sheriff independently, but really working cooperatively. I know they're doing a lot of effort to share information, doing things from this, using technologies such as flock and other things to be able to share information about what's happening across our communities. And that's a, I think, a unique characteristic that may not always be necessary in some other police chief roles, but is critical to BK's success.
Thank you, Kevin. And last one for this question, Joanne.
We are definitely going to miss the chief. He's been very good to all of the neighborhoods. He's always done a really nice job of reaching out and being there for everyone. And so sad to see him retire, but very happy for him. How wonderful to be able to be at that stage and to be able to retire. It's hard to go last on this question because a lot of the things that you think have already been said. Definitely think you want to focus on a chief that's into community policing, building those relationships with neighborhoods and making sure that people feel comfortable with the police and understanding what their role is in the community, focusing on training, making sure that they're up to date, making sure that they're willing to look at policy and things that may need to be revisited based on all the things that we've seen happen over the last year and a half. So looking at all of those different pieces, but also thinking about how we do work with other communities that surround us. You know, we have a lot of places, we are pass-through, we do have a lot of highways that pass through BK. And so we have to have those opportunities to, to work together. So just want to echo much of what others have said, but really focusing on that idea of building relationships with the community.
Thank you, Joanne. So we are now at 7:57 and our so-called agenda is to end this by eight o'clock. So I would like to take this last few minutes, I would say five minutes, we have five of us here, to just say one, anything else you would like, you know, the listeners to know about you, your platform, if I could give each one of you one minute. Okay, so I will go back to, to Andrea to start that off. So one minute, if you could, anything else you would like the listeners to know. You can go.
Well, one of the things, thank you. One of the things I would like everybody to know is that I really want to stay on council to see some of these projects come to fruition. Many of these projects have been in the works for six, seven, eight years and, and we're getting pretty close to the finish line on some of them. And I would really like to stick around to see some of those finished. The other thing that I would like for people to know about me is that I spend hours studying and going through the materials for the meetings. I do not show up at a meeting with my mind made up and it is not always a six to zero vote. I have voted against many things that my fellow council members outvoted me on. One of the things I try to do is to weigh the benefit of what will happen in BK against unintended consequences for residents. And the backyard comes to mind. I really want to see that come about, but I also am looking out for the people who will be impacted the most, that being people in the homestead and people in Ladera. So I would really appreciate your vote beginning April 19. And so we'll see you at the polls.
Thank you, Andrea. Next, we'll go down and just have to look at my list if I don't miss anyone. Andrew Clark, I believe, go back to you. Yeah.
Thank you. And, and, and thank you again to, to your organization for hosting this. This has been a great conversation. And, and I think one of the, one of the big things that I failed to mention, and it's not, it's not a headline grabber, but we're about 18 months into a comprehensive and complete reboot of our code of ordinances. And what that is, is it's development code, zoning code. And one of our goals and my goals in particular, you know, kind of pushing for this to get started, was that it was important that our codes met what development should look like, looked at what the laws were now because we're not a little town anymore. And I think one of the things that I would really like to see through is, is the finalization of that rewrite because it is so vitally important to how we move forward as a city, how our comprehensive plan fits into that, how, you know, the transportation piece of that fits into it. And so I look forward to another two years and I thank you for those who stayed late with us and look forward to seeing you at the polls.
Thank you, Andrew Clark. Next, Kevin Height.
Thank you. I'll reiterate the appreciation for hosting the forum. Hopefully, those who are still on will consider all the things we've said and I'm certainly hoping that some will vote for me. I joined city council from planning and zoning where I've been for approximately five years. And joining one of, a little over a year ago, probably one of the craziest years imaginable between COVID lawsuits, the wild winter weather, et cetera. And I still think throughout that period of time, we've done a pretty successful job of managing the city's business. And I personally find that very rewarding. I think that what may not be as apparent from something, I have a very strong background in finance and budgeting and strategic planning and establishing long-term solutions. And I think that will weigh heavily in terms of my decision-making on council. And I think lastly, just because I have had, been fortunate enough to have a lot of personal success, I'm able to devote much more of my time to some of my community interests now than I have in years past, namely to city council. And I certainly hope to continue to be part of council and be of service to our community.
Thank you, Kevin. And next, Andrew Reba.
Also, thank you guys for sponsoring this. So I believe that the city is, it's a great city and yes, we are almost built out. But there are a lot of very important decisions that need to be made. We have some parks, we have the brown track, which we didn't talk about tonight, but I'd love to talk about that. Some of the transportation things, open space is so important for us. And once it's gone, it's gone. My experience in Cedar Park, in a city that was at about 20,000, it's now about 80, 90,000. So I know how to help manage that growth. I know the things that we can do as a community to get more people involved. I know the things that we can do and it just be more inclusive, a better discussion, civil discourse. And really, we can, we can make this great. I mean, the city's a great place to be, but we can make it even better. And I will definitely be more communicative. If you want to learn more about my position, go to reber, the number four, bk.com or the same thing on Facebook. My phone number and email are there. Please contact me. I'd be more than happy to answer questions. Lastly, thank you for staying on board. And I'd like to ask for your vote starting on Monday and through the election on May 1. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. And last but not least, Joanne Taylor.
I too want to express my appreciation for the opportunity to, to talk with people about where we stand on these various issues. I really want to be an advocate for people. I want to be able to be a voice for neighborhoods, for individuals, for the things that are going on in, in their lives that mean, that are meaningful to them. And I also want to make this a more transparent process. We need to be more open about the decisions that we're making and why we're making them. So while we may all vote the same way, we need to explain why we're voting that way. And if we disagree, we need to explain why we disagree. So those things need to be put, brought out into the forefront. And I think one of the reasons I really decided to run is because so many of our elections have been unopposed. And we've had appointed council members who then ran unopposed. And so I really felt like this was an opportunity for us to open up the, the lines of communication, to find out where people stand on these various issues and to really legitimize the council members that we have. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Joanne. And with that, I conclude the forum for BK City Council. Thank you, everyone, again for coming to this forum. You all did a wonderful job. And this is my first time being, ever doing this. So thank you for being kind to me as well. And I would like to hand this over to Mindy to close us off. Mindy, and any other things we would like to tell our listeners?
Well, thanks, everybody. Thank you, everybody who participated. Thank you to all the candidates. Again, really appreciate you putting yourselves out there to do this difficult task. Thank you to the Lake Travis progressives, Lake Travis Democrats and Tuscan Village voters for, for this effort. And thank you all in the community who go out and vote. Like I said at the top of, at five o'clock, which seems like a long time ago. I really am committed to this because I want to see democracy work and I'm really proud of all the hard work that Lake Travis progressives does for our community. If you want any more information about Lake Travis progressives, feel free to reach out to us. And thank you all and BK City Council members. It was really great to host you. It's been really fun having you this year. This is our 18th candidate forum and we have never had a BK forum. So we're happy to have you. Good night, everyone. Get some rest. Be safe, be careful, take care of each other and we'll see you all soon.
Good night, everyone. Thank you again for listening.